Councilor. Assistant Secretary of State. Counselor. 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 Counselor President.
I am Mr. President, Secretary. At this time, when I ask the place we leave you to the flag, there's all place standing by head by Counselor. Can anyone?
My place is in this flag, United States of America, and it's a public address area, one of my nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Lisbon, the Vianer's in the Netherland Board of Act of Control. Number of Lisbon has been properly posted on the city home of the Lord, Reserve for Search and Passage Anderson, his home file of the city court, and ABC. Board Secretary, Room 106, City Hall, Lisbon, New Jersey, and mail to Anderson on request, accompanying any notice for mail to the St. Elijah, and only to be in compliance with the requirement of the New Jersey Public Code, being act. First or committee, much to approve committee on the scheduled ABC meeting held June 18, 2012.
Motion.
Move and second.
Second.
Assistant. Hold.
Counselor.
Aye.
I just want to recognize Counselor Grover.
Thank you. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor. Excuse me. Counselor.
Aye.
Chairman.
Excuse me.
Speed approved.
Ex-ordordavis, application for place-to-place transfer from Palantos Nightclub Restaurant and Pola Preliminary Retail to Substitution License Number 2004-33-110-007. Single license C-036, former site act, 403 East Jersey, Lisbon, New Jersey, 0726. To Palantos Nightclub Restaurant and Pola Preliminary Retail to Substitution License Number 2004-33-110-007. Single license C-036, to his new location at 352 Mars Avenue, Lisbon, New Jersey, 0728. Hotship exemption, corporate structure, Galileo, A, Mustafa, 352 Mars Avenue, Lisbon, New Jersey, 0728. President, Secretary, one of the second business owner. Due to the attorney's service clients trying to just look at late, go move on to item number two. Application for first person transfer from Newark Airport, Newark Airport Insurance LLC, Trade As, Carlson Country Bank, and Swift, Pola Preliminary Retail to Substitution License Number 2004-36-291. As 001, single license number C, as 2691, Gilchell, Realty Way, Lisbon, New Jersey, 0721. To Sherers, Chavanne Limited Liability Company, Trade As, Country Bank, and She, Pola Preliminary Retail to Substitution License Number 2004-36-291. As 002, single license number C, as 2691, Gilchell, Realty Way, Lisbon, New Jersey, 0721. Gary, Ar, Hasselbacker, 137, Felswood Road, Feltre Drive, Mooreport, Fort Town, New Jersey, 08057. Madam President, this is his owner, Libsyn owner company that owns one of the city's top applications. Chertel Patel, 799, Lane, Meteor, Pennsylvania, 19063, Madam President, this is his owner, owner company that owns one of the city's top applications. Use the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Casey, I'm with the firm of Balance Bar located in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. And here this evening representing Sherry Chavanne with the liability company, which is the current manager of the Country Union Suites Hotel located on Bloomington Way, in the Jersey Gardens area. Tonight, Sherry Chavanne is requesting approval from this board for the transfer of liquor license that was previously held by York Airport LLC, York, York Airport Beverage LLC. Which had managed the hotel when Carlson Company directly owned and operated the hotel. Sherry Chavanne is operating this hotel for a company that's also owned by Mr. Hasselbacker and Mr. Patel, known as Pinnacle Haham, Pinnacle Holdings 7 LLC. And that entity now runs the hotel, and there is no offer being sold or offered up at the hotel until this license has done. So previous licensee ceased doing anything with the license when the hotel was sold in December. And we are waiting to hopefully have this license approved so that the operations that had occurred under the previous order would continue basically in the same fashion.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I ask some questions? Amid Ms. Casey, that area pertains to my ward in the city.
Yes, sir.
What's the intent of Shri Shua with regard to a license? What is the plan of using the license to develop?
I had my clients explain to you specifically, but the majority of the management of the hotel that was there under the previous owner.
I can hear you.
The intent to do exactly what happened there before, but I'd like them to tell you with their own words exactly what, how they intend to operate them.
May I? Yes, my name is Gary Hasselbacker. Basically, the way we intend to operate the liquor license, as Ms. Casey has indicated, is the same manner with the previous owner operating it, which is basically sale of beer, wine, and alcohol from the front desk location. And possibility of utilizing garden room that exists on the seventh floor of the hotel. Which is basically the same way that Carlson operated the hotel and the liquor license when they owned the hotel. So our intent is to continue to operate it in the same way that they were operating it.
So you'll have liquor for room service, I assume?
We can, we will have, most likely what we will do is have guests come to the front desk as opposed to delivering to rooms themselves, just for, to ensure that there's no leverage, participation in drinking alcohol.
And you'll have a lounge, I assume?
There is a garden room or a tea room on the seventh floor, and we also have a breakfast area that can be utilized for serving either complimentary or for sale alcohol.
There won't be any DJs or outside performers, I assume? Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion, thank you.
Second, Counselor Grover made a motion to approve the items. Second. Second by Counselor Keenan. Hold on. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Chairman. Aye, six members. Good luck. Good luck. Eight. This goes to three. This is prepared for figures, cabinet, trade and figures, cabinet.
Yes, good evening, Counselors, my name is George Cruz of the C R Z, the attorney for order, face is hat.
Counselor, I had spoken to Mr. Cruz about the charges, and there'll be a non-ballot plea to the one charge of a brawl or license premises which occurred on March 3, 2011. Other for first offense, there would be a three-day license suspension, which is not a ball to the six-day credit for a total of 24 days, which licensee said they would enclose. However, requesting that they be able to close on August 1st, and get rid of their inventory within the next week.
Spoke to my client, and they just need a few days, July 29th will be over, a day they will be, if it's okay with everybody, to close.
You're going to close in July?
On July 29th, yes.
On that question?
29th. No objection. Say to Counselor, I can hear you, no objection, no objection.
So, so if Ms. Casey is approving, a motion to approve the non-ballot plea and the sentence?
I just wanted to remind them that this is their first defense, and the Counselor Cruz, great attorney, and he'll probably advise them directly, but just realize that a second offense gets worse. So they got to realize that it is their first defense, they're ready to close it, however, second time around, as you know, George, it gets a little more hairy. So, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement. Thank you, Counselor, I did advise my client, say that they're aware of the situation, thank you.
Motion by Counselor. Oh, you said? Motion by Counselor Grover, second by Counselor Keenan. Hold on. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. 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 Chairman. Aye, State Member.
Thank you.
Close.
Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
What happened, any questions, item, come forward, please, I understand that, please. Turn your side, sir. First item, my lieutenant. Application for place-to-place transfer from Palantos Nightclub Restaurant and Pola Preliminary Retail. Are we ready to begin this one?
We're fine. My name is Shu, please, I would ask all the passengers to be not looking for this restaurant. This is a, I have, I'm Mr. Yedder Muscarra, who is the sole shareholder of the corporation. Counselor, excuse me, Commissioners, this is an application for place-to-place transfer of existing license. The license was cited at 403 East Jersey Street in Lisbon. At that location, that location consisted of a burnt-out building, and it was my client's intention to restore the premises to a restaurant. However, the premises was sold in a tax sale, and was ultimately sold to a Mr. Antonio Acevedo, who is the inherit owner. Mr. Acevedo has signed an affidavit that he is restoring the property, but he intends to use it for his own purposes, and has no intention of leasing the premises to my client, so he can restore his establishment. For that reason, we're seeking to transfer this license to 352 Mars Avenue in Lisbon, which is under a lease for a restaurant and a price.
The, Counselor Grover?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I know this area very well, it used to be topsy-topsy more, way back when, and the building was historic, a fire. 352 Mars Avenue, I believe, is in the fourth ward, Counselor, Ms. Keenan could probably speak with the applicant as far as any new restrictions, if any.
Counselor.
Yes, my major question I wanted to ask, like I know you mentioned a restaurant, but one of the major things signature here is also a nightclub, what are the intentions?
That happens to be the name of the original corporation, but Mr. Muscarra is not intending to have any dancing or any type of activity there, it's going to be strictly run as a restaurant.
Okay.
That just happens to be carryover from an old name that the license had, and was having other returns.
Great, great. Well, Mr. Muscarra, I've known for a few years already, and I know he's a hard-working man, and he does his best to maintain a great level of excellence in our community as well. And knowing that it's not like a nightclub, that's maybe just a restaurant, I have no problems with it.
Thank you.
So. Counselor, do you have any more else?
Make a motion to approve it?
Second. Moved by Counselor Pennsylvania, second by Counselor Grover. Hold on. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Chairman. Six ayes.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Muscarra.
Hello.
Ex-ordordavis, item number four, renewal of Triad Enterprise Trade As 7, clean the parts, inactive Substitution License Number 2004-33-064-003, single license number C-126. This inactive license is located at 8-10 South Street, Lisbon, New Jersey, license has paid in 2011, about 12, and 13 hundred fees, and tax class certification. Were received for all these years, special leave received from Director ABC Swin to NJ SA, led to income 1-12, 39, and is now subject for you for a 2011, 12, and 13 license term. Okay.
So it's still a popular license?
Still a popular license, yeah. Just a question.
How many, how many years should they be allowed to do the inactive status?
Well, they can continue on for quite a bit, if they have a special reason, because that is an act for probably at least four years.
At least.
All right, I'll make a motion. Motion by Counselor Grover. Second, second by Counselor Keenan. Hold on. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Chairman. Aye, six ayes. Ex-ordordavis, item number five, renewal of Castro, Carlos, Arise, inactive party, retail to sub license number two, 2004-33-0111, single license number C-228. This inactive party license was listed at 8 Jefferson Avenue. License has paid in 2012, 13 hundred fees, and tax class certification, but received, special leave received from Director ABC Swin to NJ SA, led to income 1-12, 39, and now for you for a 2012, 2013 license term. This is another license, been enacted for quite a, quite a bit, and is still available, stay in after. Any questions?
A motion?
Motion by Counselor. Second, second by Counselor Grover.
Hold on.
Assistant. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Aye, six ayes. Renew approved. Ex-ordordavis, item number six, I have a significant number of cereals, Riverside, and, and, inactive to sub license number 2004-33-219, as 2004, single license number C-114. This inactive license is located at 84 Punch Street, Lisbon, New Jersey, has paid in 2012, 13 hundred fees, and tax class certification, but stipulated received, special leave received with Director ABC Swin to NJ SA, led to income 1-12, 39, is now held for you for a 2012 license term. Again, this is another inactive license, this is a license to have a point bit, as we see the special leave from the Director of the State of New Jersey. A question, Counselor? Have a motion? Question? Motion by Counselor.
Second.
Second by Counselor.
Hold on.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Chairman. Aye, six ayes, yes, motion, license approved.
Mr. President, before you go on to next item, what can we do, we use all these inactive licenses throughout the city, can't we, what's the basis for us to start buying some of these? Not at all, I guess.
We have orders that allows you to buy, but the prices of the orders are only about $10,000, which is way below market value, and if somebody is willing to surrender for that amount, then you can approve that, if they'd like to do that.
Well, I mean, can you look at that, or give us a suggestion if you could do any orders?
Well, it all depends on how much is in the kit nearby.
Can you look at that for me?
They look at it.
We got those licenses out there, and obviously there's no location for them, if we can get them off the, off the street, so to speak, then we have to deal with them later on, I guess.
Item number seven, ex-ordordavis, renewal of club liquor license for the year beginning July 1, 2012, expired June 30, 2013, application fee for renewal of club license, liquor license, file with the Council for consideration. And approve for renewal of the license year beginning July 1, 2012, and expired June 30, 2013, list attached for number 31 license. Any condition imposed upon any license, your 2011, 2012 license terms should remain the same for 2012, 2013 license term. Back here, there's a list of the licenses, and there's only one of the licenses, which is the Union Fludger Circle. What happened, you might be hiding this one, the first one is not by the yellow.
Mr. President, which one, the 31 licenses?
The very first one.
Is that right? How do you practice carrying the license?
There's just one, not counting?
Yeah, the official says license number 31 licenses.
Should be just one. Should be number 31 license.
Okay, well, this is a Union Fludger Circle, that's a club, doesn't it?
Right, that's a license, 31 to club license. It's a club, it's a one-way club.
What happened with that, they've shown it happen?
No, they probably got all their tax clearances cleared up, so now the subject will be known with your approval.
Okay, and definitely make a motion to approve.
You make a motion?
To approve.
Motion by Counselor.
I said.
Second by Counselor Grover.
There's a search.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Counselor. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor. Aye, six ayes, license approved. Ex-ordordavis, number eight, renewal of preliminary retail to sub license for the year beginning July 1, 2012, expired June 30, 2013. Application fees for renewal of preliminary retail to sub license, file with the State Council for consideration, approve for renewal of license year beginning July 1, 2012, expired June 30, 2013, list attached for number 32 and number 33 license. Any condition closed for any of the license between 2011, 2012 license terms should remain the same for 2012, 2013 license term. I think the retail assumption, I believe, is, they highlight in the review, is about, oh, about a half, about a, one, two, three, four, five, six. It's about 13 licenses.
Mr. President, just a question, Mr. Secretary, are there any current conditions on Legend Sport Lounge down at bottom, Vegas, Mama, John McEnick? Do they have any restrictions or conditions on record? You don't recall?
Yeah, they would be making, they would be making the same.
Right, I can answer, I just can get a lot of complaints about loud boys out there, I just, I don't know if there's anything we can do with that. But I'll, if you can just call me more, I'll, you know, if there's, if there's any conditions, I appreciate it. All right, I'll make a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Is Paradise Restaurant and Lounge, is that considered a candle bar?
Counselor, I can, I can quite agree with you.
The license number 33.
And the difference between?
The difference between 32 and 33 is what?
Liquor store or bar.
Okay, so Paradise Lounge is any way that we could bring them up at the next meeting, for loitering, always, you know, really?
Well, this is a renewal, if you wanted to follow up on the renewed, you could follow up, they have to stay in a temporary extension of the license at the next meeting, which would be until September, if you want to bring it in to the talk about?
Yeah, just a token, just so you forget the message right on, right there, I would like to renew right now, but then have the secretary to send that letter to be at the next ABC meeting.
You said Paradise?
Paradise, yeah. It's constantly loitering there every night, in front of the premises. Okay, I think I got the message from the lesbian council meeting, and I hope that he respect that, and I think he wants to do that, so we have to bring it in, and if he's still in violation, I have to make sure that he gets, maybe a police officer to work, and clean up his act, and pay out of his pocket.
My, my question, this, how long ago you just said, I don't know, any condition on the license, now, Mr. Secretary? There's no condition on license?
Well, I'm not a to stop, just so we renew once long, if possible, and if usual.
Okay, motion?
I made a motion.
Motion by Counselor Grover.
Second.
Second by Counselor. 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 Aye, six ayes, renew approved. Ex-ordordavis, number nine, renewal of preliminary retail distribution license for the year beginning July 1, 2012, expired June 30, 2013. Application fee for renewal of preliminary retail distribution license, file with the State Council for consideration and approval for renewal of this license, year beginning July 1, 2012, expired June 30, 2013. first, two thousand twelve expired June the thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, this attack for number forty-four license. Any condition imposed for any of your license, for the two thousand eleven, twelve license term should remain the same for the two thousand twelve and thirteen license turn. These are retail distribution. I want to highlight in a way, I think it's about three of them. Any questions?
Yes, Councilman Keenan? Sorry, I'm asking, detective, on bottles, like, first, if you have any recent, if you have, have been going to clients and all of that?
Nothing recently, for bottles, nothing recently.
Any other concerns or questions?
Mr. President, make a motion if you agree.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Keenan?
Second.
Second by, uh, Councilman Masah?
Provo.
Councilmember Jack?
Aye.
Councilmember Gro?
Aye.
Councilmember Ke?
Aye.
Councilmember Seden?
Aye.
Councilmember Masah?
Aye.
Council Chairman? Aye, six eyes. Excuse me, here. Open this, open this, open this, just, just, uh, the, the business, uh, what is that there, Marco? What's that?
The, uh, Picacho Liquors. He had, uh, they had reached a, uh, a non-ballot thing with us?
Yes, and, uh, he allowed him to buy, uh, the, uh, the, uh, they pay, uh, forty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay, all right. We, it wasn't like one of these things where we, they agreed to not buy?
No.
It's just a regular?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Council? Yep. Uh, next week, next week, uh, next week, register, be, back on there, the show is one, seven, four, uh, the, 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 the,